This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriation and Judication will not come to order. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on Monday, November 13th, with a second notice provided on Friday, November 17th. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This morning, we have only one item on the agenda, and that's Bill 209, introduced by Senator Tom Adda, an act to amend Section 1, double F, Chapter 5, Public Law 34-42, relative to appropriating solid waste operations funds to the Guam Solid Waste Authority for its operation in fiscal year 2018. As sponsor, I welcome both Senator Adda, Senator Espaldón, and Senator Vice Speaker Turlahe. And Senator Adda, if you please explain Bill 209.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 209-34 amends the appropriations amount for fiscal year 2018 for the Guam Solid Waste Authority from the amount of $7,5221 to the amount of $19,566, $983,000. And the new amount actually reflects the amount that the Guam Solid Waste Authority that it has taken to operate the Guam Solid Waste Authority. And so, I have actually confirmed with the Office of Finance and Budget, the Legislature's Office of Finance and Budget, that additional $12 million is in fact there and available for this appropriation. So, that's what it does, and with the new appropriated amount, that will enable the Solid Waste Authority to carry out its operations for fiscal year 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Here to testify, the Chairman of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board, Mr. Gale. Why don't you join us up here? Madam General, Elizabeth Barrett Anderson. And Lester, are you going to testify? Why don't you come forward? Why don't you go ahead? Mr. Gale, we'll have you first, I guess? Just in the order of the sign up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, Senators. My name is Andrew Gale. I am the Chairman of the Guam Solid Waste Authority, and I'm here to provide support for the bill that's in front of you. As you know, we're in a unique part of this process, a unique situation, so to speak, in that the division of the Department of Public Works was put under receivership many years ago. And one of the things that the government of Guam had to demonstrate to the court in order to come out of receivership would be that we would, the government would be able to handle the operations of the solid waste requirements for the island. Pardon me. And so, we have been working with the court for many, many years, and one of the things that was done was the actual, the Guam Solid Waste Authority was created, but with legislation authored primarily by Senator Adda. And Senator Adda has been instrumental in helping the board try to meet the requirements to satisfy the court that government of Guam is indeed ready to take over the operations of solid waste management. So, one of the, one of the thing that is in front of us today is the fact that, you know, the receiver has been operating, generating the budget, and forwarding it to the court for approval since it's been in receivership. And there wasn't a formal process that involved the government of Guam, either the legislature or, for approvals, so to speak. And so, one of the things that was brought up in a public hearing by the receiver was that the appropriation that's in the current fiscal year budget wouldn't be adequate for the Solid Waste Authority to continue its operation. It never hindered the operations before because under receivership, the receiver controlled all the money and didn't, didn't really need an appropriation per se. The court had all the authority. So, really, I believe that this piece of legislation will help us demonstrate to the court that the willingness of the entire governor of Guam to make sure things are correct. This additional appropriation really is just that, it's an appropriation. The funds are from within the, all of the revenues from the Guam Solid Waste Authority. The Guam Solid Waste Authority today generates revenue in the order of $18 million, $18, $19 million a year, and this would, this appropriation just authorizes the authority to spend that money that it already generates. And of that $18, $19 million a year, about 10 or 11 million roughly goes towards the actual operations. The rest of it is put in reserves for future cells, for other, other future requirements of the Solid Waste Authority. And so, again, the, we appreciate Senator Adda working with us on trying to meet these requirements and demonstrate to the court that the government of Guam is ready, willing, and able to handle the operations of the Solid Waste Authority, and also, we are ready to proceed out of receivership and manage these operations ourselves. That should be the case. I do, I do want to mention one other thing, and that is, one of, one of the outstanding items as an authority that we're, we're working on is the hiring of a financial person. The enabling legislation allows for the, specifically for a chief financial officer. We have had a difficult time finding someone that met the specific requirements of a chief financial officer. And so, we've instead looked to hire a controller. And one of the specific requirements that the chief financial officer, for the chief financial officer that we had difficulty finding was someone who was indeed a CPA that would be willing to work for the authority at the, at the amount of money that is really appropriate for the position. And so, we had difficulty finding that. However, we found, we found a very qualified controller. We actually had five applicants, and we narrowed it down to the top two or three, and we have a very qualified applicant with six to eight years of experience in the solid waste industry, in a finance position, in a, in an analyst position, as well as an analyst position. So, we are looking to be able to hire a controller and, and, and would like, we're not sure if there needs to be any kind of changes to our enabling act to allow, to allow that or not, but I think Senator Adda might have more, more insight in that specific requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, General Gale. General?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee, and Senator Adda. Thank you very much for sponsoring this piece of legislation. We are just a few weeks away, in a couple of days, more than a couple of days. December 31st is the deadline that Chief Judge Francis Tadingo-Gatewood passed set for the end of the receiver in terms of the management. We might still have a few issues that the court desires to maintain oversight after December 31st. But my office supports, and the Guam Solid Waste Authority has been doing a very good job of preparing itself and preparing the staff for the transition out of receivership and to the autonomous agency. As the chairman had said, it's kind of an awkward situation because this legislature has created the autonomous agency. This legislature wants it to fully function as an autonomous agency, as other autonomous agencies have done so. But the board has not had the ability to do so because of receivership. We've come to the board for a previous bill that is now Public Law 34-58. That was a very comprehensive piece of legislation, and it was hope, I thought then, hoping that that would have resolved all remaining issues. The receiver, however, at the last hearing, had raised the concern that the law says the Guam Solid Waste Authority has to have its budget approved by the Guam Legislature. And as you know, you, you don't approve the budgets for revenue generating autonomous agencies because the boards approve those. So, it's a little awkwardness there. I agreed with the board chair that let's come to the legislature and just get it clarified, that the $7 million that was appropriated in the current FY '18 budget should be increased to fully sustain the operations at a 19-point, 19-point-plus budget, which is what the agency operates under. This is a clarification piece of legislation. We will present it to the judge. We will take away this legal impediment. I didn't think it was a legal impediment, however, just to clarify, let's make sure it is not a legal impediment by the legislature expressing its support for the full budget of the Guam Solid Waste Authority. Our next hearing is Monday, November 28th. I expect to have another hearing sometime mid-December before the court decides to end the receivership and move the Guam Solid Waste Authority into full management and administration, with other, I'm sure, concerns of the court to be addressed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, General. Lester?
How are they, and happy holidays, everybody. I've been in communication with the author of Bill 209, and from BBMR's standpoint, we view this as a continued effort to stand up GSWA in accordance with the projected transition and termination of the receivership. Bill 200, which was recently passed, laid out the foundation for the transfer, orderly transfer of contracts, employees, and all responsibilities to GSWA. However, I think this also just adds the additional layer of assurance that the funding that will be continually available to GSWA for future needs in this current fiscal year are indeed available and has been expressly stated by the legislature as being available to assist in the transition. So, from the standpoint of BBMR and the continual push collectively to be able to resolve all, all the outstanding issues related to finally getting out of this current situation and moving forward, and giving all the necessary resources to GSWA, we're in support.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
There was a statement that was made, General, that you didn't think that it was appropriate that they, or at least there was an issue as to whether or not the GSWA budget ought to be sent to the legislature because it is a air quote autonomous agency. And I purposely used air quote because I'm not sure if there's any other agency, well, besides a hospital, that costs us $12 million a year. We still have to, someone has to pay that obligation, and it's not in the, it's not in their budget, it's in our budget.
So, just to, just to clarify, I like, like, I agree with, with the Attorney General here that it, we didn't think it was a legal impediment because the, the solid waste authorities, the revenue is generated by the solid waste authorities tipping fees. So, there wouldn't be any transfer of money from the general, general fund. You can correct me if I'm wrong. This is all, this is all really just a housekeeping matter of allowing the authority to spend the money that it has. It's not an additional $12 million from the general fund coming in, into the authority. It's really, I don't know how to explain it better, but it's, it's, it's just authorizing the authority to spend its own money. So, we generate roughly $18 million in tipping fees, and that's, this was, and the budget includes, you know, operational, a portion for operations, and it also includes apportions for, for reserve funds for future expenses. And so, this is, this is all self-sustaining within the own, within the agency, authority, excuse me.
You stated that there's a reserve fund for future expenses?
Yes, that is correct.
Is there any, anything in there, in that $18 million to contribute to the government of Guam's debt obligation for Lazon, the bond?
If, if you asked, opinion, in my, in my opinion, there, I think there is, I might get in trouble from my other board members or from anybody else, but my opinion, I think there is money in there that could be contributed. It's, the, the receiver is, is of different opinion, and their opinion has, is, is what has been adopted by the court to allow for the, ensuring that all the future requirements of the authority, of the authority are being, are met. But we don't have, as an authority, we're still in receivership, we don't have any, any authority to change that at this particular point. It's all, it's all been at the, at the level of the judge. But one of the things that the previous legislation does is it, is it, it has the court, I mean, it requires the board to go through a, to go through a rate, a rate study to ensure that our current rates can meet the operational requirements of the, of the authority. And then, that will give, at least me, as, in my opinion, that'll give me as a member of the board, a, an idea of what will be required to, you know, one, handle the daily operations and meet our municipal solid waste requirements from a local regulation level and a federal regulation level. It'll also give us an idea of what we'll need for, for future requirements, and our future requirements would be opening up a new cells at the Alajin landfill, equipment requirements, you know, the wear and tear of our machine, of the, of the trucks, et cetera, as well as maintaining the cap on the Ordot dump. That has to be maintained for, for 30 years, and so, we need to be able to maintain that. But then, after we see all that, and we, and we look at what our, our financial picture looks like, you know, I, I think there might be some money that will, that will be available for debt re-service. I don't think it will be the amount of money that was agreed to, that was signed in a MOU, MOU many years ago between the authority and, and GITA. I don't think it'll be that much, but I think there will be some. But that's just an educated guess. We, we're not going to know for sure until we put our financial, our, complete our, our management team and take over the operations of the authority.
Mr. Carlson, do you have anything to add? If memory serves me right, there was a time when they were contributing a small amount, and then it stopped. And it's just, I'm just wondering, I mean, I joke with my colleagues about the fact this is like, well, mommy, transfer the house to me and keep the mortgage because I want to take the kids to Disneyland, and I don't want to cut back on expenses.
I agree with you, Mr. Speaker, 100%. There was a time where reimbursements, when debt service was just capitalized interest, it's about four and a half million dollars a year, when those reimbursements were being made in accordance with exactly how this whole plan to be able to fund the opening of Lazon and the closure of Ordot came about. So, yes, there is a standing requirement, and I believe that once we get out of the receivership, and as Chairman Gale mentioned, you, they'll be able to have a firm idea of, we were given some information on a court filing, district court filing a little while ago, and there, there are certain fees, there's an extensive amount in legal fees, which I don't believe will be necessary moving forward because we won't have to retain that much counsel to be able to address matters before the court. There is the receiver's fee, which is significant, which should not be a fee that we would have for much longer. And then, there is, there are a couple of buckets that get filled, and one is titled Reserve for Future Costs, or something to that effect. So, I think when the ability to craft the review of the obligations, understanding the existing operational costs, necessary and appropriate reserves for the future are addressed, then I, I think we'll, we'll have a better picture of what it is that will be available.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Lester, just wanted to check, when this, when the budget bill was passed and it appropriated $7 million, I don't remember any mention at that time that GSWA was being underfunded or that there was that extra money that we could have moved. In fact, so I looked at the governor's submission of his budget request, and it looks to me from his letter that he points out, and it, almost the same amount, we're talking about moving an additional $12 million over to solid waste from that fund, from the solid waste fund. But he had, in his letter, said that he would appropriate $11.6 million to GMH for capital improvement projects resulting from legal or administrative actions I intend to pursue against the Guam Solid Waste Authority for debt service reimbursement. Is this an action that ever came to fruition, and what is, or what is the status of that action against GSWA?
It's twofold. First, we have to, as a budget rule, we need to account for the revenues that the government receives, solid waste operations fund being the primary source for, for the subject at hand. We understand that the administrative responsibilities that DOA performs on behalf of GSWA, specifically payroll, we have the bulk of that $7 million in salaries, benefits, and overtime, with some money for telephone, and some money for materials and supplies, and some money for contractual. Now, I've seen the receiver's breakdown of costs, and I know that the contractual costs are, are way above what it is that we budgeted. The, the idea from a budget perspective is that you understand that there'll be about $20 million less the host community fund reserve set aside, and there'll be about $19.7 million available. So, there has been a collective effort, not just from the governor's standpoint, I think the speaker.
Lester, are you answering my question? All I want to know is, why wasn't this, why wasn't this mentioned when we were having a public hearing on the revised budget, and only $7 million was going to go to GSWA? That's the one question. I understand the presentation from the receiver.
We've had discussions, we've had discussions, we just haven't taken it to court.
So, there's no status, there is no action? Is there an action pending? Would you describe that as an action pending, or not, not even?
Not currently.
Mr. Gale, are you, are you familiar with this action that the governor says he's going to pursue against Guam Solid Waste for debt service reimbursement?
No, I'm, I'm not familiar with any action.
Do you, do you know why if only $7 million was put into the budget for GSWA when, if you're saying that, that doesn't even meet the $10 million for operational expenses for the year? I mean, Lester, I guess I'm asking you that because we did a hearing on the revised budget also, and that was never brought up.
When you take into account what we believe is necessary for reimbursement, we appropriated the rest.
So, you were intending that that be used for reimbursement of the debt service?
We didn't, we didn't, the, the speaker and the administration, sorry, the legislature and the administration for several years put in, in the budget that, and appropriated from a, with, with the desire and hope that there would be some adherence to the reimbursement requirement. I think the speaker finally gave up and decided not to put that in the budget, and for, for good reason, because it's not, currently it's not going to happen.
I know, but both, both of you are telling us, and then we received the receiver's accounting of how much was needed, and, and according to this, as Mr. Gale said, there's $11 million spent, oh, sorry, that's the wrong year, in 2017, approximately $13 million spent for operations, and, and then he says the, the rest of it would be put into the reserves, but according to this, it's $18,900 for reserves. Am I reading that right? Says required reserves $18 million totaling $18,900, and...
No, no, that, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that $18,900 is a, is a sum of, of, of the columns. If you, the actual total reserves is like $5, $5 million something.
$5 million?
Yeah, the 18.9 is, you add that $5 million and add it to the $13 million on the total expenditures, and that's the, that's the 18.9.
All right. Okay, then that's, then that matches what you said. Okay, thanks. But, but yeah, I guess I'm, I'm still perplexed by how, if that has been clear to you all this time, what, what is the status of the rate review?
Oh, it hasn't started yet. We, we won't, we are still working on getting our own, completing our management team, that was what I mentioned about the controller, in order to do the, the rate review, and that will happen after receivership ends. We'll factor in all of our, all of our current costs post-receivership, and then determine what the rates, if the rates are adequate to fund our, our operations according to a budget that is particularly set.
Does, does the GSWA have any discretion on that $5 million? In other, in other words, what did the legislature put a restriction on this $19 million that's going over to GSWA? That $5 million of that is, is going to be for reserves so that it couldn't be all spent on operate? Do you have that type of flexibility, or are, what, what is the status going to be when the receivership is ended? What exactly, what, which of this is flexible, or what are we mandated? It was my understanding at, at the last court hearing that I intended that it looked like GSWA was pretty hooked into contracts that were going to far exceed this receivership, and that you were not going to have that much discretion as to which ones you could terminate or not.
Well, we're, we're going to have a certain amount of discretion, but not 100%, because as it, as it stands today, there will be a trustee post-receivership. because as it, as it stands today, there will be a trustee post-receivership and the, the way this trustee is going to work is 100 percent of the commercial tipping fees will flow to the trustee. The trustee will withhold specific amounts for future fund requirements specifically to maintain the cap at the Ordot dump, which will be a portion of this reserve, not, not the entire reserve. And then after they, that is held by the trustee, after certain money's pulled out for that, then the rest of the money is supposed to flow to the Solid Waste Authority to handle its operations and any other reserves, at least that's the idea. We have expressed our concern about such a trusteeship because it basically means that the court is, the case doesn't close, the court's involved for the next 30 years.
Right, 28 years, yes.
Whatever that is and so, you know, of course, we don't, we, we weren't particularly thrilled about that and, and we've expressed that to the court. She, I believe the court has yet to rule. She's, she's reserved on that, but a, as it stands today, there will not, there will be some discretion based, based on the rates that are charged today and based on the tipping fees that are collected today, the, the board will have a certain amount of some discretion over what happens with those reserve funds, but not 100 percent as it stands today.
All right, is there any chance that the board would have money to send over for debt service to the governor as he had kind of put into his budget request? That any of that money is going to be used for that purpose?
I, like, as I said earlier in this, in this hearing, I believe there will be a certain amount, but if, if you look at the original, if we go back to the original agreement that Mr. Carlson referred to, this, this, you know, this 4.497 million that's listed as a reserve for unfunded expenses, that was the amount that was being remitted to, by the authority on, by, by the receiver on behalf of the authority to the legislature to pay for the capitalized interest. That, that number is supposed to step up to about 12 million dollars, roughly 12, which would cover about 75 percent of the debt service at the time, which included the principal, I believe, right? Right? And so it's that amount that I don't think would be sustainable from the, from the view of the, of the receiver fees because you, you couldn't have $10 million in operations and pay $13 million in, in debt service on a $18 million revenue, right? So it's, it's that level and then also keep reserves for future sales and equipment, et cetera. So it's that level of, of reimbursement that I, that I think would really require the, the authority to look at its rates and figure out, you know, what, what are the rates gonna be in order to sustain that level of debt service? And then, and then, then it becomes a, you know, a, a hard decision to make on, on whether that happens. But I do believe that there will be a certain amount of money that would be made available for a portion of that debt service from the Solid Waste Authority without touching rates. Again, until we complete the rate review and do all that, I'm not gonna know for sure, that's my opinion. I hope that's, that's, that's clear and doesn't confuse too much.
And just to clarify, when they said we're gonna be decreasing the cost, by decreasing the cost of the receiver and decreasing, something else, sorry.
Right.
There were two things that you mentioned.
Legal fees.
Oh, the legal fees, yes.
Right. The, the, the assumption, and that's what it is at this particular point, it's an assumption that there will be, you know, some of these costs.
Right, are gonna shift.
Will, will, will be lower and, and we feel that, that by bringing in our own, our own management team.
Manager, yes.
And full-time manager and a CFO or controller in this particular instance and reducing some of the expenses associated with the legal issues that are surrounding the, the authority, that there will be a reduction in costs. However, you know, we still have to bring these onboard, we still have to work on transition of employees, we still have to work on this, so it's, it's, until we get our management team onboard with specific experience to analyze that, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to definitively tell you what, what that would look like.
All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The receiver right now has the authority, at least by the submission to the court by the receiver, the receiver's authority for spending comes from the district court, I think we all acknowledge that. As a consequence, it is the court that has the approval authority for the budget since the beginning of the receivership that was stated here and I think we can agree with that. With the end, and then the further statement here is with the end of the receivership approaching, the budget approval process will soon change for GSWA to that which is provided by Guam law. We agree with that, okay. The, I, the question really is actually is a matter of the amount. If the turnover, from beginning of the fiscal year, if the receiver had the authority from the court to already spend for its operation, in other words, they could reach into the solid waste fund to operate the solid waste on this island, if that ends come December 31st and the solid waste authority takes over, one quarter of the year would have already passed. Now, you stated that the operation costs are about 18 to 19 million dollars per annum. I mean, is that true? I, I guess the point I'm trying to get to is that is this the right amount, right? Or should it be less one-fourth? Because if we already expended one-fourth of the supposed 18 to 19 million dollars for the operation of the fund, then what's left in the fund, right, would be less. Or in essence, to be able to operate it all the way through, then you would need three-fourths of the amount as opposed to the full 100 percent. Is that valid?
Yeah, I understand your point. I believe this is, as the Attorney General had, had mentioned earlier, is, is, we didn't think was a legal impediment because you, you have to operate with a budget. I mean, the receivers got a 2018 budget. We looked at this optically from a, a full fiscal year budget and that it, the, the amount appropriated is for, for the whole year and a portion of it is, is being spent with, under receivership and the rest of it will be spent under, under control of the Solid Waste Authority out of receivership.
Right, so, so technically, and again, I just wanna make sure we're right on this because if we appropriate this full amount and it's not there because one-fourth of it has already been spent or already been obligated by the receiver, then if we appropriate this full amount, then that's almost an overappropriation.
Well, you certainly don't want an overappropriation and the way this was prepared and drafted was for fiscal year 2018.
Right.
I understand your concern. I, I guess it's something that I did not consider, I don't know if the board or Lester had considered, and I wouldn't know what that amount would be if it's to appropriate it beginning January 1st. I don't even know if that's, does that start the quarter, Lester?
Yeah, if I may, I, I think what we're trying to do here is just to be able to give the resources necessary. The, the Bill 200, I forget the public law number, basically gives all the transitional legal requirements so that GSWA can then be signatories with the bank and they, they will be assuming the contracts that are already in place. So the funding that is here is, is appropriate for the continuation of the fiscal year. Upon full assumption of control of the revenues and a rate review, which is part of what it is that Senator Addas legislations, which have become public law, requires of GSWA, I think you need to make a, a rate petition within like six months after transition. So he's gonna need all of, to wrap himself around everything that's already encumbered, what the length of those encumbrances are, there is a contractor who operates the, the landfill in La Zon, how much that is, how, what, what are the lengths of that engagement? And then kind of understand where he may or may not be with respect to fully encumbering all of what it is that solid waste currently is anticipated to bring in. So I don't, I don't think that we, it's cut after the first quarter and there's like an assumption, I think it's a continuation and that it's appropriate to, to, to stay the course.
Well, Mr. Carlson, I'm just gonna interrupt you right there in that if we appropriate the sum and if, kind of technically, just kind of generally, one-fourth of it has already been used up, that extra one-fourth, which translates to about four to five million dollars, could actually trigger a potential rate increase because now they'll be short that four to five million dollars. But I understand and I appreciate what you're saying about giving the authority all they need to do, all they need to have to be able to do the job that they need to do. But if a quarter of this amount has already been spent or committed, one where the other, and we are now saying, okay, at, you know, three-fourths of the fiscal year, you're gonna get 100 percent of the budget, then that in itself could trigger, could possibly trigger a rate review that would increase the rates because we did this.
Senator, you know, it was, I, I couldn't disagree, I couldn't agree with you more and our position would have been that we are already into the FY 18 budget year and that's why we were of the position that Bill 200 and now Public Law 34-58 would have been sufficient because we had passed the fiscal year appropriation deadline and it's kind of awkward that we are here now appropriating for a full fiscal year towards the end of the first quarter. So your concerns are absolutely valid. You raised the concern that we perhaps would not have to even deal with because my position would have been for the board, start working on your FY 2019 budget. The court has already approved the receiver's budget for, for the fiscal year, the court's approved that, but we have in, you know, interposed in here a changeover in leadership. And this issue was raised by the receiver only because the statute said the legislature shall approve the budget. Perhaps had we not had that language in there, we would have had a transition, we would have had a transition. Senator, if, this is something that you wanna work with the, the board with regard to what is the last three quarters, I understand that, let us know that, we'll present that to, to the judge, but our position would have been, we would not be here had it not been for the receiver raising this to the court. The budget has passed and whatever is the operational budget of GSWA in receivership is what we anticipate it would have just transferred over. Apparently, the, the, the district court judge was very concerned by the receiver's raising of a legal question and we are presented here today with a very good question from you, I'm not quite sure I can answer that, other than, I'm, I'm sure the board doesn't wanna, a situation where we are overappropriating.
I appreciate that and again, it's not that I don't want to assist as much as we can to get our authority, Solid Waste Authority, give them all the tools, give you all the tools that you need and all the money that you need to be able to operate effectively and efficiently, but again, my concern is if we overappropriate, then that would definitely trigger a rate review to be able to meet that appropriation and I'm, I have concerns. So maybe it is incumbent upon us to talk with the board a little bit more to understand what that real figure should be as opposed to 100 percent financing since we're only operating on three-fourths, 75 percent of the fiscal year, that's what we're transferring. Just wanted to ask, but thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, to the question of if there's an account that's set aside for the bond reimbursement, I believe in the amended bond covenant, there is in fact an account that was set up entitled bond reimbursement in addition to, you know, sinking fund for cell development, future cell developments and, and other things. So there is something in the amended bond covenant that sets aside an account for bond reimbursements. I would imagine though that the current tipping rates that we charge is just sufficient to raise the revenues that are needed to pay for the labor and, and the operation of La Zon and, and all that. And to be able to generate additional revenues to put money into the bond reimbursement account is going, will require a rate increase to generate that additional amount, additional $12 million, which according to Mr. Carlson is what the annual debt service is. I know, I know that everybody was looking at that $5 million amount in reserve for unfunded expenses and I think that, I know that, I, I think that included things like there was additional requirements placed for the Daryl Road construction going into Ordot. We still got other expenses that are kind of still looming out there on the, on the land condemnation around Ordot. There's still the pending expenses associated with setting up a trustee, we don't know how much that fee's gonna be, there's gonna be the cost for an engineer and an operator for Ordot because of the, to make sure that we get a handle on the methane problem there. Otherwise, we're gonna have, we don't handle that properly, we're gonna have a, an Ordot volcano that will, could possibly, you know, so those are some of the unfunded expenses that we don't know about right now and so this is not the, you know, this is not excess as such that is ripe for the picking yet. The, so, so I think with respect to that $5 million, we, we need to be careful with that and until GSWA actually takes over the operation, then they can actually go in there and put everything under a microscope to see if, in fact, the budget, the $19 million budget that the, or, yeah, the $19 million budget that the receiver says he's been operating under is in fact, if there's gonna be savings as a result of the transition, but until we get in there, we really won't, can't, can't tell right now. And, and I think that our, our objective right now is to achieve that transition and once we get our house back, then we can go inside there and, you know, do the in-house discussions as to, you know, you got too much excess in the accounts, we should transfer it over to the government for reimbursement of the Section 30, money that's being used for the debt service and whatnot, but the bottom line is we've gotta get our house back first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I'm wondering if we should explore the language of the sum of, well, the, the balance of this fund up to 19 or whichever's less because just in case the balance ends up less pursuant to what Senator Espada said, because you're not GSWA, I don't know, it just depends on the semantics, I guess, whether it's the AG right now with the receiver is spending from the solid waste fund, is that from your 7 million appropriation? No, right, it's from whatever, so, yeah, okay. But I also wanted to ask if, if I know that there are two, you, you mentioned the two court hearings pending, one in November 28 and one in December, and if you could just please prepare and submit to us a list, I mean, the, the receiver has prepared in attachment one, a list of expenses that they, I don't know if this is a monthly expense list, but something that shows us which parts of these expenses are going to be continued under the receivership or pursuant to a contract that's been entered into prior to termination of the receivership that you're going to be bound by. I guess the non, those would be the non-flexible expenses that you're going to incur, right? Do you understand? Do you understand?
So, can you, so you're requesting that we submit a...
A list, or you indicate, you know, which of the expenses that he's listed or your own list as to which expenses are we continuing pursuant to court order and, you know, the receiver entering into a contract, for example, the 28-year contract that's being considered right now? That type of expense that we are going to have no flexibility on? I guess I would just like to see how much of GSWA's operations are really pre-controlled, I guess, prior control pursuant to court order or pursuant to receiver contract made prior to turnover of the receivership or termination of the receivership.
Might it be easier to identify what expenses go away maybe? Like, for example, we know that the receiver fees are gonna go away.
Right.
We know that the chairman had already indicated that the legal fees are probably on the high side, so that's probably gonna come down a little bit. But otherwise, repairs and maintenance, security services, personnel, I would imagine that's gonna continue, other than those two items. I think that maybe the reserve for unfunded expenses, once they get a handle, and once they let out the contract for the operator for Ordon and the cost of the engineer consultation and the trustee, once we get a handle on that, once those contracts are let out, then we can get a better fix on that. But otherwise, I think probably the, those two items are probably the only ones that you could really put a finger on.
Yeah, yes, I agree. But my point too is, when we say that the receivership is terminated, it's terminated with a lot of restrictions, right? You're entered into contracts and that we can't, we can't do anything about. And those are the, I just want to, I would just want that to be very clear for everybody, the public. I mean, it's been made clear in the court hearings, but I guess from you to the legislature that they, these are things that according to the court or according to contracts entered into by the receiver that we cannot get out of, that these are things that we, we have no flexibility on, that you, GSWA, are going to have to continue to honor those contracts.
Right. Some of those contracts, you know, particularly for the landfill operations and the hollow-only transfer stations, I mean, they're essential to the operations of the...
I understand.
Of the authority. And they have terms on them and it wouldn't have been, we wanted to ensure that we were meeting our obligations so that they, so that the previous, you know, Bill 200 allowed those to continue. But there is, I mean, there's flexibility as far as those contracts go, there's expiration dates on them, et cetera, there's terminations for cause that can be executed within those contracts. The law that recently passed just gives the board some flexibility regarding those. But the one that's really unclear right now is the trustee, the issue of the trustee and what that'll be, so...
For the Ordon closure.
Right. So just wanna make sure, you want us to give you a list of what we anticipate that might be...
Or after the court hearing, just...
Right after the next court hearing?
Yeah, whenever you think it's appropriate. Sometime, yeah, by the, by the time that the trust, the receivership is ended, I just wanted to be very clear for the public which obligations we had to continue. And Madam General, you said that the court was going to maintain oversight of certain things and that that might be similar.
I think as we approach December 31st, I do know the 28th is a hearing of this month. I anticipate the court will have one or two final hearings before the 31st and the answer to your questions will become more crystal clear. And then when the authority does take over, it will become absolutely crystal clear what the government of Guam is taking back and what the court continues to hold on to for operations of government via court order.
Thank you very much.
There being no further questions, I thank you all for coming this morning to testify on the bill. At this point, the committee will continue to receive testimony. It can be sent to SenatorBJCruz.com or delivered to the building mailroom, right? We stand adjourned.